Ms. Sarah, are you good to go? All right, I will say welcome everybody to the September 6th City of Angels Camp City Council Meeting. It's all rise, or actually it's in roll call.
Mayor Folio.
That was a test.
Present.
Vice Mayor Herndon.
Present.
Councilmember Tiscornia.
Present.
Councilmember Moncada.
Present.
Councilmember Scherrato.
Present.
Staff is present.
Pledge of allegiance.
I have pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next I would look for approval of the agenda as posted or amended.
So live.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign. Okay, passes by though. And I will take one second if I can for this pen. This was sent to me by a good friend of mine, TJ Tower from Texas. So I want to say thank you very much for TJ for sending me the Texas-sized pen. Next is item number four, public comment. Is there any member of the public here that would like to make a comment? And then we'll go to online after that.
Just staff comments for me. Just want to let you know that we are doing the community survey. It's now open, it's on our website. You just click the link, follow the process to help us get it completed. And it's due by September 30th, 2022, 5:30 or 5:00 PM is the last time you can submit for the survey. And then I just want to remind everybody on September 16th, it's homecoming parade and Highway 49 will be closed from 1:45 to about 3:00 PM.
I have questions for you, Ms. Rose.
Me?
Yeah.
You can put me on the spot.
Do you have to be a city resident to take the survey? Or can you be sphere of influence to take the survey?
I think you have to be a city.
What about a business owner?
Business owner, yes.
In the city.
Uh huh, yes.
Just not a primary.
You said it was the 22nd?
The last time to submit is September 30th. So it's on our website now. And also we do have a new website up.
Which looks amazing.
Thank you.
And I saw you posted on Facebook too.
Yes.
The purpose of that survey is...
The city gate is what, it's the process for the strategic plan.
Spot everywhere.
That was a test, you have.
Right?
So there's Rose's public comment. Any other public comment in the audience? Anybody online? Michelle, the row, I don't know who's, Rose got a vote.
Yep, nobody online.
No one there, okay. On from the public comment to item number five, consent agenda. Is there any member of the public, staff or council that would like to pull anything off of consent agenda? Going once, going twice. I would look for a motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll make the motion, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign. Okay, item number six, regular agenda. A, public hearing, reintroduce, waive second reading, hold public hearing to consider adopting ordinance number 530 to rezone the parcel from Community Commercial CC, the multifamily residential, R-3 zoning district, Amy Augustine.
The parcel is the parcel behind Dr. General owned by Mr. Hariford. And the purpose is to get it from Community Commercial to multifamily residential that is adjacent to the mobile home park and the applicant desires to do multifamily housing there. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Somebody just received staff report, so I will open the public hearing. Is there any members of the public here that want to have a comment? And Rose is shaking her head for online. Going once, going twice. We'll close the public hearing and I would look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 530.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign. Okay, item B, public hearing, reintroduce, waive second reading, hold public hearing to consider adopting ordinance number 531 to rezone from Public P to Community Commercial CC, 0.56 plus or minus acre portion of assessed parcel number 058-015-011, being sold to the Mariposa Amador Caligres Tuolumne MACT health board and approving a boundary line adjustment between assessed parcel 058-015-011 and 058-015-012. Applicant, City of Angels, Amy Augustine.
Mr. Mayor, council members, two corrections, you already approved the boundary line adjustment and being sold, I am told this reported last week and that it has in fact already been sold. So this will simply make the parking lot that is currently on next to the police department, instead of being public, will be Community Commercial so that they can use it in conjunction with the rest of their museum and administrative building and be happy to answer any questions.
So the boundary line has happened, this is the remaining parcel and it's the rezoning of the remaining parcel to MACT.
Yes, and you've already done the general plan amendment and first reading rezone. So if we were to deny this, they would simply have a piece of public land floating around there. I guess they could still use it for parking, but it would be less useful to them.
Any other questions from council? Open public hearing. Anybody in the audience? Okay. So I will close the public hearing and come back and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 531.
I'll live.
I will second then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign. Item C, public hearing, reintroduce, waive second reading, hold public hearing to consider adopting ordinance number 532 to rezone from Historical Commercial HC to Public P on a 0.5 plus minus acre assessed parcel number 060-014-001, south of Utica Park, being purchased by the city contingent upon close of escrow. Applicant, City of Angels.
Mr. Mayor, council members, as reported at the last meeting, escrow house closed. We now own this, we would like it to be zoned public so we can pursue the future uses of parking area and another ingress address to and from the park. And this was zoned to P, which is what we would prefer and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Did we already do a study on this?
Yes.
We're clear.
Well, I knew we had asked for that.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience? Rose, anybody online? Going once, going twice. I will now close the public hearing and I would look to adopt ordinance number 532 for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign.
There we are.
Okay, item D, public hearing, reintroduce, waive second reading, hold public hearing to consider adopting ordinance number 528, adding Chapter 8.04 edible food waste recovery to the Angels Municipal Code AMC, Amy Augustine.
Mr. Mayor, council members, we presented this at the last meeting and discussed the fact that food generators, such as supermarkets, would need to connect with food users, food recovery services such as CRIO or one of the food bags so that unused food did not go to waste. Your city administrator has already on our website put together handouts and information and you can now do the complaints if you need to if some is wasting food as required for state law. And we have some meetings, I believe, coming up fairly soon to meet with all the applicable parties and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions from council?
So we've identified that this is our two local grocery stores, this is potentially the high school and the elementary school or one or the other or both?
Yes, although it's a little strange in that we are responsible for educating them but not responsible for their reporting.
For the schools.
For the schools.
They do their own.
They do their own, yeah. It's sort of a...
And that's it, was it?
What about like fentanyl bill?
Yeah, fentanyl bill.
They didn't have the 150 beds, I believe. Don't they have less than 150 beds?
I believe so.
Yeah, and that means they don't have.
Yeah, and then it was also maybe catered events or no?
Some catered events depending upon the size.
Okay.
Any other council questions? I will open the public hearing. Any members of the public here? Rose, you got anybody online? Once, twice. Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 528?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign. Item E, public hearing, reintroduce, waive second reading, hold public hearing to consider amending ordinance number 529. Section 14.25 to remove section 14.25.030, service discontinuance, meaning any person who desires to discontinue water service shall submit a request in writing or in person at the commercial office and no less than two working days before the date on which discontinuance is desired. The request shall contain the date upon the water service to be disconnected and forward addressed for the customer. Water service may be discontinued only on ordinary working days. After the effective date of discontinuance, all charges accruing cease for that period. No service may be discontinued for a period of less than 30 days. And adopt resolution number 22-30 approving the resolution of suspension of service. Rebecca's not here. You are up.
So what we're changing is that they will now be charging a fee for both disconnecting and restoring of the water that wasn't done in the past and that it could not just be a short period of time, that it has to be the minimum of 30 days and then there's some reasons here on the resolution of why they would need to have that water disconnected.
Any questions from council?
It's a minimum of 30 days or?
I believe it's a minimum of 30 days.
Okay.
Yeah, or before they would do it for a week or two weeks.
Okay, any other staff questions or council questions? All right, I will open the public hearing. Anybody in the house, step on up. Rose online? Close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 529.
I'll make a motion, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign. Item F, amend the fiscal year 2022-23 adopted budget and adopt resolution 22-57 Utica Park Expansion Project, accept the funds from Caligres Community Foundation, Angels Camp Community Club and designate the city administrator authority to execute the necessary grant documents, Rebecca Callen, AKA.
So you have in front of you the background of requesting the $3 million for the 3.82 acres. There's a budget adjustment to this showing how we will be moving the funds and adjusting the budget. Currently, the fiscal impact is that we did not have this $3 million in our original budget, so this will be an additional funds to the budget.
And with the addition of the Community Foundation funds added in as well, correct?
135.
Yeah, the resolution shows the breakdown.
This says 177 on the budget adjustment, but over here on the resume, it's 135.
The 177 was because it was budgeted already?
Previous, okay.
Previous, so we're backing that out.
Oh, I see.
And now we're changing the difference. And it did, I mean, are we set in stone that we're putting in the amphitheater and all of this or is this all up for discussion?
I think this is already had, well, actually, there you go.
This is what we committed.
She's already stepping up.
Yes.
So we have to do it.
You have to do it, yeah.
We didn't set in stone. If we accept the grant, then it was a, it was to bring people in part of a grant, so it was for tourism and recreation grants, hence it is set in stone, all of the items that we have set, we have planned to put in.
So I heard a lot of people reach out to me and say, oh, you know, great, $3 million and that's really not that much money when you think about it, but everyone thinks it's going to be like a, you know, Disneyland. So can you just briefly tell the public again what the limitations are, what the improvements are going to be with the amphitheater?
First of all, we had input from 950 individuals in putting together what the plan for the park would be. And at one point, we also wanted to add a skate park, but because we did not receive the $5 million grant, we had to remove something and so that was the skate park. And we have not forgotten it, we still will pursue funds for that and a location for that. What this grant does include is portions of 3.2 acres, not from Mr. Follendorf, as I've heard from many, many people, but in fact from Jerry and Mary Gross who live up north. We have in fact completed the initial appraisal, we're doing our confirmation of the appraisal and we'll bring it back to you on the 20th and close session. This will include a new playground and we will try to prioritize the new playground, which will go in approximately the same location, but in a larger area, we will cover a larger area. This will also make it so that it's ADA accessible because many of the seniors around cannot watch their grandkids play, they can't negotiate that uneven ground, what have you. This will also create a new pavilion that is a little bit brighter and broken up into areas so that instead of having a rental thing, we can have two smaller groups or one big large group and they can actually see each other around the area and perhaps incorporate the kitchen in that, bring all of our kitchen supplies over. New bathrooms, yay. I know everybody will be disappointed to know that the portable ADA bathroom will be going away.
And these are new bathrooms at a different location than the existing bathroom?
Yeah.
Because they already have the grant for our existing.
We actually have two grants for the bathrooms.
Simultaneous, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll work this out. Neither one was, can be used to rehabilitate existing bathrooms. They both must be used for new bathrooms, so we'll figure out how to make that work. Then there will be outdoor gym equipment for adults. There will be a park course that will go around all of the historical artifacts that are still out there and part of the old Laitner Mine with an interpretive trail that will tell you what the history of each one of those items is, what it actually looked like and how it fit into the overall Laitner Mine. There will be a kiosk that will be a trailhead for the Angels Creek Trail because you'll be able to connect to it, Mount Bush and theater and several shaded structures, basketball court, bocce courts. And am I forgetting anything?
Can I ask a question about the kitchen? So is the current kitchen going to be moved?
That will depend on final design. If it's possible, they could potentially make that bathrooms.
Okay.
The idea was to try to get the kitchen so that it was really easy to be in the kitchen and have the pavilion area around you for big events, although maybe it ends up in the same place. Not positive at that moment of the design. The staircase that used to be there 100 billion years ago will become one of the main entrances again off of the street, which will tie into some Caltrans improvements that are planned right along the frontage for parking, as well as the trail that comes down by the mining equipment will be developed into an actual trail to come down.
And then the Mark Twain statue is going to get a facelift?
It's going to get a facelift, we're going to do a 3D impression of it so that scan of it so that you can actually make a mold and it could be reproduced if it was ever destroyed. And we're going to try to either add another one or simply if we just have the money to fix this one, we'll do that because the museum still has the frogs that, or at least one of the frogs that jumps out from the bottom of its feet that were originally on this mansion.
The entrance is more off of the highway now?
It, the pedestrian entrance.
So does that mean parking is, there's no additional parking in this plan, is there?
No, they would not pay for parking under this grant.
I'm sorry, what'd she say?
They would not pay for parking under this grant. So, yeah, and restrooms were considered incidental, so they could...
So they'll just purchase.
But not that many, there's like six, yeah. I love all this and such, I just find it hard to believe that we can do all of this with $3 million. Yep, it's going to be tight, that's why you also have $177,000 towards the playground and another 135 towards the playground so that we've tried to bolster that budget as much as possible. We also have some additional CBG money that will be going towards the park improvements, both the kitchen, which we already have, as well as the bathrooms. So we'll have a little bit of flexibility in the budget. If we find anything else, we'll add that.
Who's going to prioritize what happens?
It's, there's going to be somebody who'll do the final design of what each thing will look like, but just community input wise, it does make sense to try to do playground first and then perhaps, what we're trying to do is avoid all the frog jump events while we're constructing. And so the idea is we would then go to the amphitheater part and then maybe do the centerpiece last. It'll be left up to the people who are going to be doing the construction. If they have to rip everything out, put in new water lines and all that sort of stuff, we're going to have to just do the whole thing at once. So we'll be bringing you updates and taking it...
So we don't have to go out to bid for the construction of this?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. You made it sound like it was going to be like a grassroots.
Well, yeah, I mean, if they're going to be doing bathrooms and stuff, they're going to be ripping up everything and go after the fact. Yeah. Yes and no. Oddly enough, the sewer line of course goes right through there as we all know and goes right by the kitchen and so you can block some right there and it's not too far to put in new bathrooms.
What about the mine itself, the property that we're hoping to acquire? What about the likelihood of mine?
Contamination? Geotechnical issues?
No, like...
No holes.
Like...
Going to a disaster.
Buildability, I think is what I'm trying to say, is like compaction and such.
Yeah, that's going to be something we'll have to look at.
Because that'll suck up $3 million like that.
It will, it's not an easy site to...
Right, so does this take into consideration any kind of like navigating around existing potential areas that are not compact?
So...
What do we know?
So that could be a challenge. What we do know is that a geotechnical study has been performed on this in the past when they tried to develop it before, many years ago, but I wouldn't have expected the geotechnical conditions to have changed over 10 years. So, yeah, so we have something to go on. Are we doing any type of soil? Sampling, as it was materials? Yes. Phase one has already started. The people who own the property have in fact sampled soils, they did sample for contaminants. I will tell you that it was primarily historically rock crushing that occurred there, which the chemical processing was then over closer to triumph. So if you expect a contamination, you would tend to expect it over there and not over the Laitner Mine. I mean, that's all good, I just sound like, I'm thinking, oh gosh. All we're doing today is accepting the fight.
Right, but I think this was a good conversation because with the media talking about the grants, I've had a lot of phone calls, I'm sure you all have, and there was even a lot of stuff on the line. So if anyone's watching or...
It was the talk of Starbuck's.
Well, and I think online, everyone was really worried about the Mark Twain statue.
Oh, yeah, they were.
Maybe making sure that we don't like paint it purple or something.
No, 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 we went to restore that.
Right, for sure.
I'm not sure, it's 1944, so technically it's a cultural resource under state law, so we'd have trouble doing too much to it.
And there was multiple hall beaches years ago.
For sure.
Farmers market.
For the last three years.
Yeah, the last three years, farmers market, I think it, the fireman's breakfast thing.
People forget how flawed government is.
Yeah, I know.
I try to remind her, but this has been in the process for many years.
Yeah, and that community group raised enough, I mean, it started off with just them raising for the play structure. And they raised enough to do the play structure all on their own.
Yes, they do.
And then everybody kind of brainstormed and came up with, let's try going after a grant and make this a bigger, better thing. So, and that's, my question is, I know if we didn't get this grant...
We were still going to do...
The play structure on, because they had enough to do, because we were ready to jump on that, correct?
Yes, that's why we want to make it a priority.
Right.
We also have this deadline attached to the monies, should we accept them tonight from the Angels Camp Community Club that's going to put on it by the Caligres Foundation or something?
Yeah, they're the holders of the funds and it was the community club that raised that money.
And I would tell anybody to go talk to them, I've had multiple people call me some good, some upset about things, go talk to that community club group. There's a whole herd of them, Jessica Johnson, Johnny Cora, Jeremy and Alicia Wood, there's a whole bunch, go talk to them, go brainstorm with them or offer your help to them, so.
Concerned about the playground or the whole thing?
The whole thing and just change and all sorts of stuff, so.
The only thing I've heard concern about is maintenance of this beautiful park that we're going to hopefully one day own, the ongoing maintenance and then keeping it clean from people who are homeless.
I have in fact talked to public works, they look forward to the day when the bathrooms will be a little easier to clean and if we could design them accordingly, they would be on board with that. And frankly, they have to go out there and clean all the time anyway, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's a bigger...
Hopefully we can make it before that can be something.
All right, so I'll make a motion to accept the bunch of amendments. Yeah, public comment. Is there any public comment?
None online.
None online. All right, seeing no public comments, I will make a motion to...
I'll second.
Well, I have a question.
Oh. Come on up. Yeah, come on up.
All right, thanks. Just a quick question, I know many grants require you to do certain things in a timeframe and such. I didn't see, and there is a schedule that we have to have certain completions by and is it aggressive schedule? What's the target date we have to have this completed by? If there is such a target date?
2025.
2025 for everything?
Everything's got to be done.
And if it's not, what happens with the grant money? Do we have to pay it back if something happens like we have a material shortage or some of the issues that we've had in the last couple of years? What happens then? Do we go for an extension or...
You can always ask for an extension, they're not, it hamper your ability to get additional funding from them, so you don't want that to happen. And so we have in fact already started work on this grant long ago so that we can stay in line with the schedule that we submitted with the grant. They're pretty strict about the deadline.
Yeah, that's what I figured. I just want to make sure that was, everyone knew that because that was a big concern by a lot of people, so.
Yeah, no, it's not a tenure grant, it's a knock yourself out, go rattle it really fast.
There's a lady right there.
You just talked about it.
Yeah, exactly.
We volunteered.
Oh, no, that's good, I was just telling people that had interested questions to talk to the community. Okay, so we've had public comment.
Yep.
Done, 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 and nobody else is online. Now I'll make a motion.
I will second, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign. Item six, adopt resolution 22-58, amending the position allocation list, approve the classification of accountant 1/2, approve the salary schedule for accountant 1/2 and remove 1, accounting technician 1/2. Approve the job descriptions for the accountant 1/2 and accounting technician. Approve the reclassification of Andrea May and accountant 1.
Two.
Two and accountant 1, I'm with you, sorry, two and accountant 1.
So going back over the history in this position, this, originally we did have an accounting technician position and an accountant position and they were consolidated, so we... in reviewing this, we were able to look at both job descriptions for the accounting technician and accountant. It was very detailed, and so we brought it down to where we're looking at the duties of that position, instead of something that's more specific of the tasks. And then we have recognized Andrea for the work and the level of work that she's been doing in the department, and taking that lead, especially during the last, you know, year, and would like to recognize her as an accounting worker.
Any questions? Okay. Any public comment in the house, online?
Online.
Okay, seeing and hearing, I would look for a motion.
I would like to keep motion.
Also, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same side?
And I would like to congratulate Andrea, she's listed.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Item H, adopt resolution 22-16, amending the position allocation, approve the classification of distribution and collector's officer in training. Approve the salary schedule, approve the elimination of the equipment operator series and corresponding salary schedule. Place all existing equipment operators in the corresponding distribution collections officer position based on minimum requirements.
So, similar review with these positions, and found that the position that we're looking at eliminating the equipment operator series, there's really no equipment that their operatives very limited in. Most of what they did in that job description falls under the new job description, so it's cleaning that up. Also, we give them incentive to move forward and get certifications in their position, and it would only benefit the city.
Staff, council questions? Okay. Public comment in the room, online?
Michelle, there were two individuals that this benefits at this plan?
Um, there's, there's more than two. It will give one individual the chance to go to the office level, which is the three, and then two are, will start in the in-training.
Yeah.
So, and then they'll be able to follow, so.
Okay.
Okay. I would look for a motion to adopt resolution 22-60, or no, 22-60.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same side?
We're also agreeable tonight.
I may just oppose this one just because.
I'm gonna oppose the next one, just so that there's a number for you to write down. Is that all right?
Alright. Item I, adopt resolution 22-61, Angels Camp Firefighter Association's side letter to the memorandum of understanding, M-O-U.
Okay. So, this one is in regards to the strike team compensation, and I don't know, Rose, do you wanna speak a little bit more?
So, the, it wasn't being pensioned correctly on that, so Rebecca came up with a stipend, I believe, that will allow for it to be pensionable when a full-time employee is currently out on a strike team. So it's to fall in line with what's requested.
So the portion of the regular pay is Calpers, and then the strike portion is not?
Correct. But I believe when they were going out on the strike, it was strike team pay and that was not.
So we have an agreement with the union, and this is not retro, this is just moving forward.
No, just moving forward.
And it, but it never did, it happened?
It had, it was, it was loaded to happen back.
It was loaded to happen, but it never happened, right?
No, it didn't.
I don't remember that.
I don't remember either. Okay, alright.
I don't think it's ever been loaded. I think it was not being done correctly.
Correct. This is something that I brought over by extension.
Deal. Okay, adopt resolution 22-61. Is there any public comment?
No.
In the house? Okay, I would look for a motion to adopt resolution 22-61.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item J, discuss an update of the ATCAA amateur following community action agency utility association program in the city of Angels.
Yes. So, we're actually utilizing, ATCA has helped several of our residents during the most recent shut-off, so I brought you some numbers tonight for that. So originally, we had pink notices go out that's 60 days late to over 130 people. Now that included landlords and tenants. I think the tenants were closer, was closer to about 85 tenants, but it was, we had landlords including copies of those letters. We were able to get that down to 47 or so door hangers, we cut that in half. That went out with a five-day notice. But there was a letter on July 13th that went out to owners and residents stating, talking about ATCA, that they could use the services, or they could set up a payment plan with the city. So we actually had close to 40, I guess it was 47 active payment plans put in place, and two were for closed accounts with balances. So we got that cleaned up. So the total shut-offs originally were nine, but we had two of those residents work with ATCA, and were able to help pay the bill, and so we were able to do, to help those two. And then we had one additional that ended up paying the bill in full. So we only have six shut-offs as of right now.
That's really good.
Yeah, coming from over, plus to 100.
So with the shut-offs, are the people still in the, on the property, living in the property?
So, yeah. And so right now, we're going to have our next round of payments that went out today. There were quite a few less. With landlords, it was closer to 80. So that's a 60-day notice again. And then what we were going to have public works do when they go to do the door hangers, is to check to make sure the water was not turned back on, because they were notified that that would be illegal activity, and they would have to lock the locks. Yeah, so that's the next step. But we're aware that Andrea reported to do that for our residents, and that they are the owners.
Is the online component to set up automatic payment updated, cause we approved a new merchant for that?
Right. We're in the process of setting up GovPay.
Okay.
But for utilities right now, that's not gonna change with the GovPay. That will stay the same. It's still the same portal. When we, we only had to shut it down when we upgraded our account system for the weekend, and then it went back up.
Okay, so it is back up.
So people can view their bills, they can check their balances, they can make payments on there.
And that, and you can pay with credit card or check?
Correct, with a checking app.
That's great. Okay, so that might help too.
Right. Yeah, definitely. But had quite a few payment plans, so that was great.
That's good too.
It's great.
And then like I said, ATCA was wonderful, and has been working closely with all the residents and helping out.
Where does their money come, where does their funding come from?
ATCA, I'm not sure where they're funding. I know they are a nonprofit.
Some of it's fundraising. Some, and then they, they're the ones that do drives for things when they need them.
These are federal funds administered by the US Department of Health and Human Services and the California Department of Community Services and Development. CSD entered into the agreements with local agencies to administer these programs similar to the energy assistance program. So it's federal money.
Okay. Any other staff discussion, council discussion? Any public comment in the house, online?
Michelle, is the ATCA information or application available on our website, or is it only by request?
I believe it's by request, and they, we give them a number for them to contact ATCA. We've been putting flyers out too. This isn't it, but we've been posting them at the post office. There's some in our office, so.
Okay. And that was just a discussion items, there's nothing?
Correct.
Next, we go to council reports, and I will start with...
Admin reporters write it, kinda?
Did I miss that?
Yeah, sorry.
Go look at that, yeah.
It is.
Michelle's probably gonna...
Michelle, go for it.
Well, that was what I was gonna tell you about was the, what's going on with the utility payments. But everything went really well with our conversion so far. We did have some issue with Springbrook and the utility billing, so we had a little delay of getting our last round of utility bills out. From what we had tested in the system, everything worked great. We went live, and we think they made some changes, and they were consolidating items that were on the bill. But thanks to Andrea, she was able to actually figure it out before Springbrook got back to us and fixed the problem, and we were able to cross this forward, so.
That's good.
Yeah.
Awesome.
That was great. So, and otherwise than that, our next up will be the GovPay, working on getting that set up. I met with bank consultants today.
Oh, good.
And turned over all the paperwork, so we'll start processing and getting our accounts set up. And when Rebecca gets back from vacation, then we'll get all the signers back on the accounts and start making that transition, so.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, now we'll move on to number nine, since we're excited to take it on us. Grant, I'll start with you on that side.
I'm, well, I'm signed up to do that day in whatever, whatever. Isn't that this month? September?
September.
Are you talking about CPPA?
Sure.
I don't think, I don't think it's a club.
Whatever, that's the only thing I have. I'm supposed to go, but I don't even know when it is.
Oh, I'm...
So I will remind you though.
Yes. Dennis will be there. It's, it's a good room.
It's a fun club. Perfect. I need a little club in my house. Brand new. Alright.
Jen, go for it.
I did my interview with Citygate last, the, at the day of the last council meeting. So that was on the 16th. On the 23rd, Alvin and I attended the UWPA meeting. We talked about budget reallocations. There was a lot of discussion, and it was only discussion items, so we talked about water, like the water analysis versus power analysis. Grant programs, he's always looking for grant programs, and there's a couple still that he's got his eye on. He, we did do dissolution of standing committees. We have several committees that were just standing, never really met, so we decided to just dissolve those and do ad hoc, as needed, if and when that happens. Other than we have our budget committee and our FERC?
FERC.
For FERC, cause there's always gonna be talk about FERC relicensing. So those are the two committees only now. And then the great news is that the communication towers, so Frank and Kyle established the communications towers from Murphy's all the way up to Hunter's Reservoir. So in the event that power goes out, we have a direct line of site, basically, if you will, where we can communicate and keep all of everything running with radio in these towers, private.
Yep.
So it, I think it went live that week, right?
Yeah, there's only one location.
There's one little dead spot.
There's one little dead spot they can't hit, but other than that, they can control and look at everything live. They can skate a system, everything, yeah, it's all, it's wireless.
And it's comforting to know that, in the event that power goes out, or a fire, or whatever, we've got that. So that was a huge, huge bonus. I did attend the Aqua Mixer at the Gold Rush Tour Company on the 24th, and that was well-attended. That was fun to see. I still have a million questions about those buses, but I'm gonna have to just call her. On the 25th, the CCWD at the park up in Utica, it was their 75th anniversary get-together, which was well-attended, and several of you were there, so that was fun. And that's it. I'm like a blackjack dealer.
Sure.
Sure.
I too attended the CCWD 75th anniversary, it was great, and the Aqua Mixer at the Gold Rush Tours. I had the Central Sierra Economic Development District meeting, and what we did, so they reached out to Rebecca and talked to her. They're looking at doing an economic development strategy, a comprehensive one, and there's a survey, and we actually have it on our website, I believe, as well, for that, and they're getting ready to set a community meeting. So just, we'll be on the lookout for that, and they're a very busy group. I attended the Calders County Solid Waste Task Force last Monday. I'm the vice chair, so that's exciting. We overhauled our bylaws, made some changes to the bylaws. We'll be meeting now, it's like once every five years, quarterly, so, so that's good.
You okay with that?
I'm good with that. I think that's really important for our public to have a place to come about their solid waste questions. And so right now, there's an RFP that was sent out about, like a, to get a company to do the comprehensive review fee study proposal. So they've got two back. They're both very reputable, very well-done proposals, so those are gonna go to the Board of Supervisors for their review to decide which ones they're gonna choose on that. So we are not meeting next month, so I think we might be meeting after this Board of Supervisors, take a look at that. We are calling special meetings as we need them now, so that's been good.
So who makes up that board now? Cause that was one of the decisions, like, how many, it's two from this, or two from the...
One from the county, it's a supervisor, one from the city, one from the recycle industry, one from solid waste industry, and then we have members at large, one that is an environmental kind of person, and then we have another member at large.
A vacancy, or?
Uh, no, there's...
Oh, so it's full?
It's full.
Okay, good.
Right, so there's the recycle person, that we put out a request for someone who wanted to join that. We got some applications. We made our recommendation to the supervisors. They're gonna approve, and then appoint, yeah, appoint that person, and then they'll get sworn in, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're moving along.
Back on track.
Alright, so Angels Camp Museum, I met last week as well. They put in $9,000 worth of installation, but it dropped 30 degrees in that building, that main building where everybody, you know, kind of goes in to buy tickets, so that's a huge impact. And that was grant money, so that was really great.
So that's where you pick up, so that was grant money through CPPA, or that was?
Correct, through CPPA, so.
So there you go.
They are, I was just, Martin is gonna be finished with the firehouse display, which by the end of this month, he has to, because it was also grant-funded money, so he has that timeline he has to finish. And I think that's really, they've had two grants that they're gonna be working on, two more grants, which is great, and we're actually starting to work on a couple of fundraisers, so keep an eye out for that.
Busy girl, right?
It was very busy the last two weeks.
Mine was just the mixer, that was well-attended, and then the 75th anniversary for CCWD, and I was very impressed with Russ's voice, I didn't know.
Oh, he's a singer, he's an opera singer.
Yes. But yeah, he really busted one out, and it was really nice to hear, so. That's all. And then I have COG tomorrow.
I also have COG tomorrow. What else? Oh, the 27th of this month is, I think, DAC, ACBA.
Oh, that's right.
There's a, there's a election night, is what I will call it, I guess. I will not be attending, I will be in Tahoe for work, so.
I will be attending for work, so I won't.
Oh, for the camp, for the...
Candidates.
I'm out of town also, I was invited to go.
Wait, wait, what's this date?
27, I think is what it was.
Yeah, and I told him I'm in Atlanta.
Remember, I, remember, I'm joining on Zoom for the closed session.
Craig will be there.
But I will be gone.
So I will be attending.
You have, I would say, you have the floor all to yourself.
You're all to yourself!
And I think there's Bret Hart, School District, Mark Twain.
Mark Twain.
There's Major A.
Somebody college.
Yeah.
They are going to try to look into Zoom, since so many people can't be there.
Oh, nice.
Are there a lot of, is the school people too that can?
No, I don't think so.
So, I won't be attending that. I also attended CCWD. I was also had my interview with Citygate, and that was a really good interview, I enjoyed that. I thought they asked a lot of good questions, and I, please, community members go out and take the survey, cause this will be what strategically helps build your community the way you want.
Also, keep a look out to piggyback off that, to keep a look out for the dates that we're gonna be doing, like, community meetings also. And we're gonna publicize those, but also just know that that's coming up, put that on your radar.
Yes.
October, I think is the first.
I think is the first, yeah. What else, others? Oh, I wanted to piggyback on what you were talking about at UWPA. We also did a budget adjustment. We had a good surplus of money, like... adjustment, we had a good surplus of money, like...
200.
Almost 300,000, for a rough number, I'd have to look back in my minutes. We kicked that back into a pool for Murphy's and Angels, in case we need to use it at some point, so we have a little bit of a buffer. It's sitting in our own separate accounts that can't be spent unless the board votes on it for anything that we want, but it's kicked out to the side and we've held it in our separate kiddies, which was kind of, kind of nice though, it was unexpected.
Joel's been working seamlessly with both Rebecca and Summer from UD, and they identified that money and then strategized where to put it, or how to carry it over, it's all over my head.
Yeah, with Gary, Gary, Gary and Mir on the Budget Committee, and the Summer and Rebecca.
Oh, yeah, you guys did a little bit too, sorry.
Oh, no, I don't care, we all met, and that's when we decided it was the best, and there's actually 55,000 that we left kind of floating out there, that was gonna be for a truck because of the air resource board. We actually are under that gross vehicle weight, that we don't have to meet that requirement, so we really don't have to go buy a vehicle. So we got, I think, 55,000 that we're gonna either do a steel shed for the lumber, so it doesn't get ruined, and that we use to rebuild, or some sort of a snow vehicle, because when they get heavy snows up the hill, they really have a tough time getting in and checking the flumes. So there is some money there that we're gonna allocate to some different things, but it was kind of nice with the water sales, we had more money than we thought, and so we put it in.
So that last storm took us over.
Yeah.
That last storm totally made the deal.
So good. I forgot one thing, the Angels Camp Veterans Memorial District voted to give $2,000 to the city to help purchase new American flags to flank the main street.
Oh.
Thank you to Tony Towne.
Yeah, thank you.
Awesome. Super cool. We will take good care of them.
Anything else from staff or council at the moment? Okay, I will go on to number 10, correspondence, which we've all read, and if anybody has any comments on that. Calendar, Rose, you will send us.
Calendar, I've been updating, so as I'm updating, you guys should be able to go in there and see the changes. So I've added some vacations on there that a couple of you will not be in attendance.
I wouldn't call it vacation, but yes, I'll be traveling.
Traveling, traveling.
It's the opposite of vacation.
I think I put vacation, so I will check. So just make sure you're going on and double-checking the calendar.
This is all through the new 360.
Yes, so if you need me to send it to you again, I will, I will actually just do it anyways, so.
Can you please, for the password?
Then we will be migrating to something different a little later as well.